6:30 PM, you are at the Common Council of the City of Wausau. Welcome. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is Roll Call. The clerk will take the roll, and I know that we have council members spread all over the place. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Here.
Killian?
Here.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Hurst?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
All members are present. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, Proclamations. I want to recognize that we have a lot of proclamations. I won't be reading them all, I'll just be reading one, but I want to recognize Alzheimer's Awareness Month, COPD Awareness Month, Human Rights Month, Movember Month, and Native American Heritage Month. I'm proclaiming it Small Business Saturday this week, whereas the government of Wausau, Wisconsin celebrates our small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms which paid employees in the United States, which are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And 3/4 of the U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas the city of Wausau supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Katie Rosenberg, Mayor of the City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim November 28, 2020, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. If you're interested in any of the other proclamations, you can find them on our website. Next item on our agenda is our Board of Public Works Committee Report. We'll place that on file. And then, before that, of course, we will do public comment. I will call you forward in the order in which I received. You have three minutes, so I'd ask you to respect that. The first person, I believe, is calling in, Matt Jamison. If you could say your name and address for the record, and then you can begin.
Good evening. Matt Jamison, 1039 South 7th Avenue, Wausau. I have the privilege of serving our community as the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of the Wausau area. Each year, we serve thousands of kids and teens at three locations, including our flagship Caroline S. Mark site, which is located on 2nd Street in the city's central core. I'd like to commend the city of Wausau, the Wausau Opportunity Zone, and the charitable foundations which gave rise to that organization for demonstrating proactive engagement and providing critical initial investment in the redevelopment of the Wausau Central Mall area, and convey my hope for additional investment in a visionary public-private partnership. Vibrancy in the city's central core makes a positive impact on a large and wide-ranging number of stakeholders, including our organization, and on the kids and families we serve. In a city of our size, as the downtown goes, so goes the central core and the rest of the community. Public-private investment in a strong community affords its young people opportunities, a sense of belonging and pride, reasons to stay, begin a career, and start a family. At some point, every community of a certain size was home to a downtown mall, and eventually these massive properties have had to be redeveloped in some way. It's simply a question of whether the community was proactive and executed on a plan for an exciting future, or reactive and accepted what it had to, depending on whatever circumstances were then present. Successful implementation of this public-private partnership will place Wausau permanently amongst those communities which chose for set envision, avoiding hindsight and regret. Economic vitality, talent attraction, innovative spaces, and pride of place, these are just some of the key ingredients in creating a community which nurtures future generations of leaders, workforce participants, and families, and creates the conditions for individuals and businesses to be able to invest in organizations such as the club, which provide critical life-changing services and programs, and bring enrichment and transformation to countless of our fellow citizens. Since arriving in Wausau, I've been continually amazed by the resourcefulness and generosity of our community, and especially that of our philanthropic foundations, two of which have helped craft the unique approach to this potential redevelopment. Most communities are not fortunate enough to have an opportunity like this, and it's impressive that this discussion is taking place while our downtown is still largely in positive shape. That's just a really good place for a community to find itself, having the ability to act and not the need to react. Thank you for your time and for your service to the city of Wausau.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Paul Lepri. If you could state your name and address for the record. You'll get three minutes.
Keep it on?
Yes, please, if that's possible.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Paul Lepri, 4207 Augustine Avenue, Schofield, Wisconsin. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you regarding the downtown mall. As Vice President of Business Development for Myron Construction, I've seen firsthand the trickle-down effect large developments, such as the one being proposed, has on the city. This project will result in over $100 million of new construction. The positive impact this project will have on scores of local businesses in the Wausau area cannot be underscored. On projects as these, well over 50 businesses will have a hand in developing our downtown. These subcontractors employ those who work, live, and play in the Wausau area, and countless businesses that will supply these subcontractors will see an enormous benefit as well. From excavators, plumbers, heating and cooling companies, furnishing companies, landscaping companies, you can see the trickle-down effect of a development such as this. We sincerely have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change our city for generations to come. The Judd Alexander and Dwight &amp; Linda Davis Foundations have provided the opportunity for us, the citizens of Wausau, to determine the future of our city. Keeping the development in the hands of local decision-makers is invaluable. Both of these foundations have been incredible stewards to this community. They have no interest in owning any of the developments being proposed. They are doing this simply because it's what's best for Wausau. The economic impact of creating Wausau as the nation's best small city will draw young professionals to the area and provide our local businesses the workforce they so desperately need. And I sincerely believe that the design that Mr. Gudorzy and his team has come up with will make us the best small city in the country. I highly encourage the city council to continue their support of WAZ and this development. The time is now to positively change the city of Wausau for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Jeff Stube. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Stube. I live at 226925 Pinhead Lane, that's in Rid Mountain. I am the Executive Director of the Dwight &amp; Linda Davis Foundation, and my office is in the Dudley Tower downtown. I'd like to start by saying something very simple. The Dwight &amp; Linda Davis Foundation's purpose, it's to enhance communities through quality of life and economic development investments. Very simple, very important. To be clear, our interest in the Wausau Center Mall redevelopment has nothing to do with making a profit. It's 100% about improving the community. I look at the City of Wausau mission statement, which I hadn't really thought about before, but "Plan and Encourage Positive Growth, Promote and Enhance Our Living Environment." We're mutually on the same side in that regard. Little bit about the grants, the Dwight &amp; Linda Davis Foundation doesn't have the longevity in our community that the Judd Alexander Foundation has, but since 2010, which is the first year of our grants, the Davis Foundation has contributed $9.1 million to enhance communities. And of this, approximately $8 million has been pumped into central Wisconsin. That includes the 400-block stage, these are just some examples, riverfront, kayak course improvements, the PAF and Grand Theater, the therapy pool at the North Central Healthcare Center, and largely the Landing, the Senior Center at the YMCA. I moved back to Wausau in 1985. I was born and raised here, moved away for school and some work. The mall opened in August of 1983. I remember it being a vibrant and incredibly fascinating place to go, especially around the holidays. I wasn't much of a shopper, but the holidays were a lot of fun. Dwight Davis was right around 40 years old, and he was heavily involved in that mall, that original project, working with Mayor Cannonberg and other community leaders to move that forward. And it was not, it was a challenge, but what made that a little easier than this one at the time is it was, they had the anchor stores ready to come here. And that was very important, but malls were going up all over. Well, now you've seen what's happened with malls, and Dwight, more than anything, hates to see the mall go, but understands, deeply understands, that the retail world has changed. To reuse that property today would be really costly. Property is soon going to need a new roof, soon going to need new HVAC equipment. Those costs could be $3 million, could be $5 million, could be more, and you still have just the same building, because those are infrastructure items. And that's just to keep it as it is. The Wausau Opportunity Zone Plan will bring more residents into downtown Wausau and create a new kind of vibrancy. We looked at other thriving communities and their downtowns, and this plan aligns with what is working elsewhere. We're not trying something that hasn't been tried. This is what's going on throughout the country. It's a thoughtful vision, and will attract and retain young adults and energetic people that our businesses need. I would like to recognize the current former council members that supported this public-private partnership at the time of the purchase, and that includes the prior mayor, Bob Milkie. I'd also like to recognize the leadership of Mayor Rosenberg in seeing the potential and recognizing the need to make adjustments to the original deal. The foundations are great community friends. Please support this project and support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jim McIntyre. If you could state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jim McIntyre. I live at 1950 Woodbury Parkway, Wausau, Wisconsin. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members for the opportunity to address you tonight. Again, my name is Jim McIntyre, and I have the good fortune to be the CEO and President of the Green Heck Fan Corporation in Schofield, Wisconsin. I also was, a few years ago, elected the Chairman of the Greater Wausau Prosperity Partnership, or GWPP. The GWPP partnership was formed about two years ago and is a volunteer group of business and community leaders that truly want to help our community on its path to economic vitality and prosperity. It is a group of business leaders representing the agricultural, construction, technologies, healthcare, food processing, insurance, banking, professional services, and engineering industries. We also have on our advisory board, high school superintendents, among American-centered leadership, president of the Technical College, the chancellor of UWSP, the prior chancellor of UW-Stout, representatives of the Marathon County Government, WPS, United Way, the Boy Scouts, the Municipalities Council, Wausau River District, the foundations, and young professionals and others. The point being, we're a very diverse group of community leaders. And we want this community to be very strong, and we strongly support the mall development plans put forth by WAZ, evidenced by the signature submitted on the GWPP letterhead to this committee and the mayor. And this employer group in our local community, and most, almost all of these are domiciled here, owned here, not organizations from outside that have operations here. But these, all these business leaders sign this letter, and including the SWMA members that signed, there's over 15,000 employees represented by this group. So we're strongly in support of this. These leaders and the companies that have voiced their support are not going anywhere. We're here through this process. So we're here, hopefully tonight you'll support this, but we're in this together, the businesses, the local foundations, and you. And just one example to show our support, what's going to happen here is Green Heck brings 2,000 guests from around the world here annually in a normal year. This isn't a normal year. Those guests will come downtown to see America's best city, and we ask you to invest in this city, in our future, and we, as business leaders, will invest along with you. Thank you for your opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Tyler Furger. If you could state your name and address for the record. Just going to give one second. Is it possible that somebody that called in? All right, I will come back to him. Next up, I have Ryan Gallagher. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ryan Gallagher. I, that was, followed Jim, okay. I live at 4004 Boulder Ridge in Wausau, that's in Rid Mountain, and we are at the Jefferson Street Inn, offices at Rocket Industrial, and my wife and I also own a downtown business called The Milk Merchant. I'm a business owner, again, with downtown Wausau offices, and I'm here to share my support of the city's continued partnership with Wausau Opportunity Zone for the Wausau Center Mall redevelopment project. Again, my wife and I are involved in a couple of businesses in the downtown area, The Milk Merchant and Rocket Industrial, and we have a real passion and love for the area, and we've been born and raised here. When there isn't a pandemic going on, our team has about 50 people working downtown as of recent, and those people support about another 100 or so throughout the United States. Last year, we made the decision to move downtown our offices and headquarters from the industrial park at Rocket Industrial, and my wife made the decision to acquire Naveve Farmagerie, which was another business downtown, because we saw the momentum of the downtown area and the area more broadly, which would include the River District, et cetera. And I would just ask fervently that you continue to build on the momentum by addressing, you know, what I view as downtown Wausau's biggest opportunity, and that is the mall and the opportunity that's presented here by these great leaders. I believe strongly that this is great for the economics of downtown and for all of our recruitment efforts. It's a real challenge to compete for talent amongst these great businesses, so we need to attract new talent, new people, to Wausau to work at our businesses. And I think we all agree at that, and this is part and parcel of doing that, helping with that, and growing our population and tax base in Wausau. It will help us, I firmly believe, draw people to Wausau and help us keep people living here long-term. So I respectfully ask that you approve the funding slated in the 2021 budget and the term sheet for the developers agreement and the TIF resources, because this plan will make all businesses in Wausau stronger, especially all those in downtown, and I feel very strongly about that. And it will make our community as a whole an even more vibrant place to call home. And so I believe that a vote for this plan is a vote for the love of Wausau, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Nicole Williams.
Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Just a little shorter than all the rest. My name is Nicole Williams. I am a Merrill resident at W-9232, State Highway 64, based out of a Wausau business at 2005 Grand Avenue. I am the regional VP for QPS Employment Group, where I get to work with numerous businesses to help with the hiring needs from entry level to C-suite. I also serve on the Executive Committee of the Wausau Chamber of Commerce and on the Board of the GWPP. The reason I'm here is to talk about supporting the approval of the budget for the WAZ Mall Development Project. Being a destination employer has always mattered in the business community, especially as of lately, while we're all on the war on talent, as you heard from Ryan. I hear from numerous businesses in central Wisconsin, many of them being in the manufacturing sector. The main challenge for them to continue to grow is getting the employees, the staff, and the talent to fill the roles needed to meet their customer needs. It is too often that I hear businesses have to say no to their customer sales or push out their deliveries more than they would like. This is all due to not being able to hire the talent needed for, sorry, in order to hire the talent needed fast enough. We are in the candidate market. This is where there are far more jobs than we have candidates for. This is making it even more challenging for our small businesses to attract the necessary talent with skill sets to get the job done. Being a business in a destination community is now becoming just as important as being a destination employer. So a community that can attract talent versus having talent leaving is key to a thriving community and a community in general. So we need to retain and attract the talent here in central Wisconsin. We already have some great things going for us. We have the outdoor experience that is provided, but the WAZ project for the mall redevelopment would take what we have to offer to a whole new level. Offering the living space, the retail options, along with the elevated experience to our wonderful downtown space is something that could give an ROI beyond measure. The small businesses need this project to create a buying community and a strong workforce community. We need to look at the future and what can be provided with this project. This is going to open more doors than many community members even realize, and they will be far better off than being stagnant with the current mall the way it is. At QPS, we hear candidates often wanting to come back and live in central Wisconsin. Typically, the spouses that make that decision harder, because they don't want to move back to a smaller city. So this project, with showcasing what the downtown will be, can help change the spouse's perspective on what Wausau can truly provide from a city experience, but also without the traffic, the lines, and all the other inconveniences that the big city has. I ask that you think of the future of our community, our small businesses, and vote for approving the budget for the WAZ Mall Development Project. This project can change the game on retaining and attracting talent to central Wisconsin. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak with you.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure, is Tyler Furger around? Okay. Next up, I have Sean Wright. If you could state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm Sean Wright, 911 Macandoe Street, Wausau 54403. I'm also honored to serve as the Executive Director of the Historic Grand Theater, and I speak tonight in strong support of the city moving forward with WAZ for the redevelopment and really the transformation of the Wausau Center Mall. As I thought about this project, I thought a lot back to a project I was involved in in Birmingham, Alabama, over a decade ago. An abandoned rail yard had sit right in the heart of downtown for almost 30 years. Development opportunities had come and gone, nothing got done. It was there, it was an environmental hazard, it was an eyesore. But the city, foundations, and business leaders came together and built Railroad Park. And you say it's just a park. It was just the beginning. It has now led to a minor league ballpark, restaurants, innovation depots, housing. Birmingham is one of the few major cities in America that is growing their city population. It's because they took an opportunity to transform their community. It's an opportunity to enhance it for the people who live there and the people who come here, and we know that very well with 150,000 people who come to the Grand each year from every county in Wisconsin, from Chicago and Minneapolis. This would enhance our community for them, as they consider coming here for more than just a show. Is it a leap of faith? Sure. Things like this always are. But who would you rather trust than these two foundations who have done so much for Birmingham, or for Birmingham, there we go, for Wausau? I certainly wouldn't be here, because the Grand Theater wouldn't exist in its form without these two foundations and the work that they've done. When you listen to that project list that Jeff rattled off, these two foundations have done so much for our community, they want the opportunity to do even more. Listen, it's going to be a slog to get through this pandemic. We don't know when our business operations will begin again, and a lot of restaurants, hotels, and others are in the same boat. Take this opportunity to kickstart our recovery, and more than that, the opportunity to enhance our community for years and decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Bruce Grau. If you could state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Bruce Grau, 1115 North 10th Street. I'm a nurse, and I'll respect your time by limiting my comments to under three minutes. Among all this recent excitement generated by proposals to redesign the mall, I need to ask, while making Wausau a hotspot for young urban professionals to drop a planner for a few years, what's the mechanism by which a significant proportion of our rooted citizens will benefit from the millions spent on these projects with our tax-paying dollars? I asked the same question of the council last year. While heaps of accolades were being made over the success of Riverlife, only one member of the council appeared to understand the paltry extent to which the successes have addressed the rampant inequalities in our city. Millions of dollars were handed to business and development, now-departed Yonkers, high-end condos at Riverlife, million-dollar ice cream stands, while the working people of Wausau faced a poverty rate 50% higher than the average of the state of Wisconsin. A poverty rate exceeding Milwaukee's across every racial group, over-doubled the rate for Latinos at 55% in this city. But as long as poverty is considered a racial issue, it will never be adequately addressed, I think. It's a class thing, and a multiracial rank-and-file action is needed to make our needs more of a priority. Our median income ranks 383rd in the state. Median income is falling, while mean income rises. So it's really the richer classes that are benefiting the most from this, now, try to stick with me, Madisonification of Wausau, making Wausau Little Madison. Making your hotspot is throwing working people out in the cold. Well, what kinds of things can we do? What kinds of things could the council do, in my opinion? Well, look at other cities. Boston has implemented a transfer tax on property sales, which brings in millions for affordable housing construction. They tax more the ones who've benefited the most from inequality. Mandate union workers for all city developments and projects. Resolve that you, as a council, will strive to make a mandate of a living wage for workers in Wausau. And develop, as I proposed a year ago, an equality agenda for the city of Wausau for the decade 2020, to boldly address this immoral kind of reality. Set benchmarks for improving things like poverty, homelessness, dispositions, I'm sorry, dispossessions, engagement, and quality of life indicators for people of all incomes in Wausau, as you figure out... in Wausau as you figure out how to divvy out the benefits of these city developments. Thank you. And I just had a rhetorical kind of question. I think I have a few more seconds.
Well, not really, but you go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to know what in the future is being planned for more input into these type of things other than three-minute speeches where we just kind of stand here and look at people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person I have signed up is Chuck Adorzy. If you could state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chuck Adorzy, One Corporate Drive, Wausau. I am the Managing Director for the Wausau Opportunity Zone. I do have to say, it's always encouraging to hear the many positive statements and personal comments about our revitalized plan for the downtown. I'm also encouraged by the support that we have received from economic development, from finance, from the Joint Review Board, from planning, and from city staff. This to me is like a commencement event tonight where you look back at all the work that has been accomplished to get this far. And we are now looking forward to an exciting future for Wausau and its downtown. There's a saying I use quite often around our office at times like this. In essence, the saying goes like this, "It is all out in front of us. Now all we have to do is execute." And it is clear that it is all out in front of us. The Greater Wausau Prosperity Partnership for Economic Growth has worked hard to establish this plan for our community, a vision that all of our citizens can be encouraged by, especially as we come out of this difficult time. And the Wausau Opportunity Zone has picked up on a portion of that plan and a clear vision for the revitalization of our downtown has been established. They hired the best consultants with proven experience and architectural skills. They collaborated with city staff and stakeholders. They followed the playbook established by previous studies done by our city, the Wausau Strategic Plan for Growth of 2017, the Tool Transportation Plan that puts new additional streets in our downtown, the Master Plan for the South Riverfront. All these plans embrace mixed-use development with a strong focus on residential being a key to success. This is not a Band-Aid concept that is not sustainable, but rather a plan that will carry us for the next 40 years and beyond. That is our goal. And now we are at the second part of the action. We are, we need to execute. And this will be longer and harder than the first. We need patience to stay the course. We need financial resources. We need collaboration between our community, our businesses, and our generous foundations. And most of all, we will need leadership, especially when the time gets tough. So in conclusion, it is true that all is out in front of us and we know what it will take to execute. And if we continue to pull and push together on this plan, we shall accomplish our goal of becoming a top-tier city, perhaps even, and I'll say it again, the best small city in America. Thank you from our community for your support.
Thank you very much. That is it for public comment.
Could I please add, I wasn't able to sign up when I arrived. Is that okay?
Oh, we will allow it. If you could state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Chad Kane, C-H-A-D-K-A-N-E, 2305 Towne Lane in Wausau. I'm going to resubmit verbally this time the written comments that I was allowed to submit back on the October 13 Finance Committee meeting. My name is Chad Kane. I'm the President of Woodtrust Bank, which has offices in the Dudley Tower and on the corner of Bridge and 3rd Street here in Wausau. I also serve as the President of the Woodson YMCA Foundation, which, as you are aware, recently completed a successful four-year, $25 million expansion and renovation project in downtown Wausau that was privately funded by various individuals and organizations that care deeply for the Wausau community. The city of Wausau was a large part of this project's success and I'd like to thank everybody here for that, providing infrastructure, engineering, advisory, and other support that has paved the way for a best-of-class health and wellness campus, which will soon welcome a new Aspiris Clinic to the area. I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the fine planning and execution of multiple move-the-needle projects that have taken place in downtown Wausau the past number of years and applaud the collaborative approach often taken between government, business, individuals, and the nonprofit community. We have before us yet another opportunity which may have the potential to be by far the most impressive yet. I urge you to work proactively with the Wausauer Opportunity Zone, the Dwight and Linda Davis Foundation, the Judd S. Alexander Foundation, the GWPP, the Chamber, and many other interested parties to execute on the proposed redevelopment of the Wausau Center. Dying malls are a national problem that will not reverse, but that reality provides great opportunity for communities willing to think big about the next few decades in a transformational way. How fortunate we are to have such dedicated nonprofit and volunteer leaders in Wausau who are willing to donate their time, energy, expertise, and money that serve the greater good. A little bit of a quick story. My family owned and operated the Johnson Hill Department Stores. I don't know if everyone might remember those. And Jeff's comments about Dwight Davis's efforts and many others in the community to build the mall here in 1983, our family, my grandfather ran the department stores in Rapids and Wausau and Waukesha and Oshkosh and everything throughout the state in the '50s and the '60s and the '70s. And with luck and not skill, I assure you, they sold the department stores in the, around 1979, 1980, and got into a different business. Little did they know that a couple of years later, the Rapids Mall would come on the scene, the Wausau Mall would come on the scene, and all these great old small-town department stores were quickly ruined and that whole business was destroyed. The same thing is happening now to the mall with the inevitable evolution of retail and commerce, and we have a great opportunity to be proactive and do something about that and make Wausau stand out a little bit. So thank you for the time and allowing me to come in late. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are done with public comment. So I guess now we will be filing our Board of Public Works Committee report and we'll move on to the consent agenda. I do just want to throw this out there for tonight and moving forward until the council decides to change your council rules, we'll be adhering to Robert's Rules of Order. I'm specifically looking at decorum and debate. It's Chapter 43, so we have it marked. Probably two things that will surprise you about it, just don't want you to get caught off guard, is that that allows for two comments on the same topic, 10 minutes each. So this will count for both public and closed-session topics. So just, so you're ready. We have our parliamentarian up here with the appropriate things marked.
May I make my comment?
Yes.
Actually, the rule from Robert's Rule says that each member will have two speeches of 10 minutes length on each debatable action at each meeting. And this can be implemented either for this session, this evening at this council meeting, or in the future. But if you're going to do it in the future, it should be done by probably a rules change to your ordinance. Otherwise, you can change it to that rule for this evening by means of a motion and adopting it by a two-thirds vote without any kind of notice. So unless there's some objection, and we can assume that you agree with the mayor's suggestion by consent, I would ask you to probably, I'd advise you to entertain a motion and then acquire a two-thirds vote to adopt that rule for this evening's session.
I guess I would entertain a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Decorum. That's Chapter 43. A motion by Rasmussen. Second by McElhany. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alder Ryan.
Where's the written version of the information? I want to read it.
As a reminder, the council has adopted Robert's Rules in any place where the council rule doesn't specifically address that. Yeah, Alder Wadenski.
Is this motion for tonight only?
That is what the motion and second was.
Is the microphone or the guts ready for you on the broadcast?
Sure.
I'm going to get some exercise tonight. Is this motion for tonight only?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Up until the point where you decide to change your council rules permanently. There is a Rules Review Committee. We'll get cracking on that soon. Is there any further discussion? Alder Ryan.
I guess I do think that you had mentioned there's a Rules Committee and I do hope that you have people that are advocates for people with disabilities so that you're adapting Robert's Rules so to be fair with people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarity tonight, could you please distinguish and define the difference between what may be quote-unquote speeches or commentary versus questions, particularly as it relates to closed-session items? Thank you.
Yes, it does address questions and it is my understanding that questions do not count as a speech. But I'll let my parliamentarian.
That's correct. Without reading the entire chapter aloud to you, that is correct.
Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote and we will be doing roll calls tonight because everyone is everywhere.
McElhany?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Motion carries 10 to 1.
Thank you very much. We are moving on now to the consent agenda. That'd be file number 201101 to file number 141009. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neal, second by Watson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Ryan?
Abstaining.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Motion passes 10 and 1 abstaining.
Thank you very much. We are now on to file number 201103, Mayor's Appointments. I have one, that is appointing Margaret Pegoria to Room Tax Commission. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Peckham. Second by Wadenski. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the motion to go into closed session. So tonight, I am requesting that the council members stay in here along with our city attorney and our clerk, but everyone else leaves so that we can maintain social distancing and we'll see you all when we're done. But first, before we do that, I need somebody to make that motion and read the language on our agenda, please.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
All right.
I'll move that we go into closed section pursuant to Section 19.85, Paragraph 1 Sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever a competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session relating to a redevelopment plan and non-binding term sheet for the Wausau Center Mall redevelopment project with Wausau Opportunity Zone Incorporated and relating to public release of prior privileged communications relating to the development agreement and TIF law.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Neal. Is there any discussion? All right, we are ready to vote.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.